Approve the payroll claim dockets and the accounts payable claims as presented in the board packet pages twelve through forty-five. Approve the treasurer's financial report for September twenty twenty-four, pages forty-six to sixty-three. Accept the resignations of the following, approve to post the positions and grant permission to hire. Amy Cole, bus route driver, effective October second, twenty twenty-four. Josh Roherschreibe, loose elementary evening custodian, effective September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Cara Matthews, technology assistant, including the swim and the spellbow coach, effective November fourth, twenty twenty-four. Rob Schulte, girls' elementary basketball director, effective September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. May I get a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent item.
Motion by Tyler, may I get a second?
Second.
Second by Janet. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion carries five o. Next is consideration of administrative recommendations. Mr. Snyder.
Thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a copy of the proposed resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five capital projects fund plan. This is the proposed plan that was presented at our September sixth, twenty twenty-four public work session and at our September ninth, twenty twenty-four public hearing. I recommend the board approve the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-four capital projects fund plan as presented.
May I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by George. May I get a second?
Second.
Second by Janet. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion carries five o. Number two.
In your board packet, you'll find a copy of the proposed resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five bus replacement plan. This is the proposed plan that was presented at our September sixth, twenty twenty-four public work session and at our September ninth, twenty twenty-four public hearing. I recommend the board approve the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five bus replacement plan as presented.
May I get a motion?
I'll move to approve the bus replacement plan.
Motion by Tyler, may I get a second?
Second, Tyler's motion.
Second by Matt, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion carries five o. Number three.
Thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a copy of the proposed resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five school budget, which includes appropriations and tax rates. This is the budget that was presented at our September sixth, twenty twenty-four public work session and at our September ninth, twenty twenty-four public hearings. I recommend the board approve the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five school budget, including the appropriations and tax rates as presented.
May I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Janet, may I get a second?
Second.
Second by George. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion carries five o. Number four.
Thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a copy of the proposed contractual agreement with the South Spencer County classroom teachers and the South Spencer County School Corporation for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. The proposed agreement includes a five hundred dollar increase to the salary schedule, including recognition of an additional year of service for all teachers that taught one hundred and twenty more days in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year for the South Spencer schools. It includes the corporation contribution to the family health insurance plan to increase by two thousand dollars and the single health insurance plan to increase by five hundred dollars beginning January one, twenty twenty-five. It also increases the corporation contribution to the teacher's four oh one A from the current three percent level to four percent. The agreement also includes increasing the key club ECA position to one thousand three hundred and seven dollars and increasing the contribution, corporation contribution to the cafeteria one twenty-five plans from one thousand dollars a year to one thousand one hundred dollars a year to those qualified individuals. I recommend the board approve the proposed contractual agreement as presented.
May I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Janet, may I get a second?
Second.
Second by Tyler. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have, I'd like to grab some discussion on this one. What was given to us in our board packet, what was presented on the school's website was a document about six pages in length, and it leaves out sections A-one, A-four, A-five, A-six, A-eight, addendum A, addendum C, addendum E, and addendum D. And I think legally, we're required to post the entire agreement. If we agree to move forward with accepting what you all have, this will be the teacher's contract, seven pages. I pulled up twenty twenty-ones, and it's forty-one pages long. In two thousand and seventeen, it was forty pages long. In two thousand and fifteen, it was thirty-eight pages. So my question is, I mean, we've already had a motion and a second. We can move forward with that, but I think from a legal standpoint, this isn't the entire contract as agreed upon. And there's no, there was nothing in my board packet, nor on the website, nor in the documentation that says that this is a summary page or an additional page, but it says that it is the tentative agreement between the CTA and the corporation. So from my perspective, I really don't think we could have even had the public hearing with what was presented to the public and the board based on what was given here. I was hoping that our attorney would be here prior so I could address that with him before the meeting started, but that didn't happen. So the question comes, what you all want to do with that? If you want to put it on hold to have time to review it and get the entire contract and go through the proper steps of posting the CTA's contract with the corporation. In twenty twenty-ones, I just pulled it up this morning, and it shows that all the changes were highlighted in one color of the, what the existing contract was, and then there were lined out items and what the changes were so that the public, as well as the board, could see what the changes within the CTA's contract is. I think legally, that has to be public record. So if you go onto our school's website, you have to kind of dance around and find the resources page, and then go down in the contracts, and there's three documents in there, two of them are more popular with this red button, and under that is this one, to even find this document. But I think this document is important to our corporation, to the taxpayer, to the parents and to the students, that it's held publicly the way it should. So I ask that the board pause on this and that we get the entire contract as required and go through the proper steps. And I'll, I've got other questions about it, but I think that's a good point to discuss before moving forward.
Well, I believe you're allowed to put the tentative agreement on the, I believe that qualifies for the statute, because we don't, we have that contractual language completed yet, that's being drawn up now. The contract, the agreement, tentative agreement states the changes to the contract, so the current contract is the same with the exception of the changes.
So, so the language to the contract isn't made out yet, but the changes that are listed have been completed?
No. The word, they're, the...
Well, I'm just saying, in twenty twenty-one, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and fifteen, the entire contract's on there with the changes, so the public can see what the differences are. If you look at just what you presented to us and what you presented on the school's website, it just tells exactly what it is. It doesn't show what the increase amount is, what the total cost of some of these packets and benefits are to the public, and they're the taxpayer. They're the ones that are involved in it.
The contract doesn't show that either, little man.
What's that?
The contract doesn't show that either.
I know, but if the entire contract was there, I could then ask it, Mr. Snyder, which I was going to do as the next question. You know, if we want to move forward with this, you had on here that the teacher's sick time and retirement is going to be paid out, but there was nothing presented to the board as to what the cost of that would be over the next, say, three years. If the next three years, the teachers that are eligible for retirement were to all retire, what is the financial impact on the corporation for that payout? Because we went through this back in like two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, where we had to take on some debt to pay off those things. And from a school board member and being fiscally responsible, I don't see how anybody could agree to moving forward this without knowing what the cost is.
That's already been agreed upon, Matt. That's already part of our contract. That is already part of our contract.
It's in the, it's in the portion of the, just the things that you added or gave to us tonight, which is like a list of additions.
Well, no, I gave that to you last Wednesday.
Correct. So there are some stuff on page two that's stricken out. Did you notice that? But then the rest of the contract on the, all the other ones is not. But you can go down here to that page that I specifically mentioned, it says that there was only one extra duty salary schedule of the key, the key club changing. None of the other ones are even listed in the entire contract as to what they are.
That's a tentative agreement. Again, that's not the contract. The contract is, the things that, all that does is present the changes to the contract.
But it's supposed to compare it to what the old ones were, and it doesn't.
Well, I, that, I would have to look.
That's why I have counsel. That's why we have counsel. I'd ask.
So you said that the tentative, is it just highlighting the changes from the previous contract? Meaning this is what we're tentatively agreeing to change from the previous contract?
Correct.
Okay. So by passing the tentative agreement, are you, what do you guys intend the effect to be, like to propose this, these changes to the teachers association with, as tentatively given and then formally?
The teachers association is currently drawing up the new contract with these changes in place.
Okay.
The contract itself does not change, just those items.
They're both already signed off on it and have agreed to it.
Okay, tentatively what they think they're going to agree to in negotiations.
But there's no, but there's no language in there that says that whatsoever. There's no summary, there's no, that's not listed. It says it's a tentative agreement. It's a contract.
So essentially, you're advising the board of what you think will be the changes to the contract. If they approve it, then those changes will be approved and a final version will be brought to them for approval. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that the procedure? Okay.
Yes.
So they're not approving the full contract, is my understanding. They're approving, basically offering these changes to the teachers association to come back with the full contract for your approval.
Okay.
I think that's what, yeah.
If that's legal, I'm, I'm fine with that. Then the questions that I have is, for the public, what is that cost estimated over the three years for retirement payout for sick pay?
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that we know what that is, since we have tentatively agreed to it with the CTA, correct?
You've already agreed to this. This is your Senate Bill one ninety-nine buyout, so this has already been bargained. Your, that is to say, if someone passes away, that whatever their contribution was, it is given. I mean, you're not, we're not adding any extra, or there's nothing agreed upon, there's nothing in that contract that wasn't there before. It's your retirement. You, you did that back in nineteen ninety-nine.
Well, I know, but, but don't you think that's, that's important to know what that cash value is for the, the total of the contract? Just because it was in there previous doesn't mean that we shouldn't know what that total effect is going to be if and when it happens, because it is. It was a big deal for us back in eighteen, but it happened the last time. I'm asking as a board member, when you put the tentative agreement together with this, what was the financial impact of that piece of the contract? Do I have that? Can I get that?
I can, I can probably get you a number. I can't, I don't know how close it'll be, but you're, you're talking about things that are going to happen in the future?
I'm saying, we know how long teachers have been here. We know how to figure retirement based on pretty good assumptions of, of that, what that's going to affect over the next two to three years. We've got a lot of financial impacts that are coming our way, and we need to be prepared for them.
Absolutely.
So I'm just asking what that financial impact would be.
I will try to get that to you.
And then what is the overall total cost of the tentative agreement changes?
Right at four hundred thousand dollars.
And that affects how many individuals?
That, that impacts our entire certified staff.
Which is about what number?
One...
It's about one oh six, somewhere in there?
Certified.
Certified, I would say, teachers, not counting principals, maybe eighty-three.
Eighty-four. How many? Eighty-four.
And the total on that package, if I can jump in, the, the total on the package, I must think is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Two eighty-nine, seven twenty-eight, ninety-five.
Because I, I brought up with Mr. Snyder last week, he said that it was like last Wednesday, I think, when he approached us with some of this, and I told him, I said, I think the teachers deserve more. I think this is shortchanging them from my perspective, and I put in writing, I said, I wouldn't be against a big fat stipend. And the reason why I think a stipend is the way to go, we don't have a single clue of the financial impact. We just spent ten thousand dollars with a company out of Indianapolis to come in and tell us our taxes are going up by seventeen percent. If you don't think taxes going up by seventeen percent in this community could possibly drive families out of our school, make belly buttons leave, which does affect the educational fund and the need for teachers, a large incentive that is in perpetual payment sets us up for frustration down the road. And what I mean by that is, a contract is always new money, which means you're never going to take that money away from a teacher, which I don't think you should. But the problem is, is as you do that and move forward, at some point in time, when the finance, when financial hardship happens, you have to make tough decisions and you have to do stuff like reduction in force. And you told me four months ago, when I asked you, that you have plans to prevent that, and in four months, I've still not received a single iota of what that is. So my concern with this contract is, I think the teachers deserve five grand apiece as a check stipend before Christmas, not a contract. And because the contract, again, down the road, teachers with one, two, three, four years of experience are going to be hurt because of the way the system's set up. And I'll turn it over for you all to discuss.
Well, for one thing, the stipends is the reason you're kind of in the position we're in now, in our salary schedule is in the lower part of the corporations in this area.
Please explain.
Which I shared with you.
Please explain. I'd like to hear it again. In what, in what way are we, where are we? Because I think you said we're like fifty-eighth percentile, so we're in the middle for schools in our...
Fifty-eighth percentile for what?
For, for our salaries?
Sixteen corporations in this area, our starting pay was fifteen thousand sixteen. I think our top of the end was, I'm just going off, it was maybe eighth or ninth.
Brad, on the numbers that you've provided for corporations of our size, that's not accurate.
That is accurate.
You're basing that on corporations like EVSC and larger school systems?
No, I did not. I did not include them, purposely, because you asked me not.
Yeah, we were nearly sixty percent in the sixty percentile of page of pay of teacher salaries across that list.
No, we're, we're not. Our benefits package was near the bottom. So if you want to have a competitive and create an environment in which you can retain and attract the best teachers, then you got to be competitive, and that's what, that's the reason why you try to give your teachers everything that you can, which is what we did. This proposal is what we can afford to give our teachers. I'd love to give them more, too. I would. But as a superintendent, it's my responsibility to manage the finances. In each of my first two years, you'll be happy to know your, our cash balance has grown, all right? So we're not spending more than we're taking in. This is a responsible contract, it's what we can afford to give to our teachers. Again, I'd love to give them more, but this is what we can do.
So let me ask a simple question. What percentage of our educational fund budget is spent on salaries and benefits?
Sixty-two percent.
How much?
Sixty-two percent.
No one else has any discussion points on this.
I will comment, I, I think that our teachers are very well worth the amount that they're getting, and I agree with Mr. Snyder, we have to be competitive with the corporations that are our size, and if this is how we can be competitive, I think that this is what we need to do.
So what do we say to the teachers with less than five years' experience in two years, when belly buttons start leaving our community and you have to redo reductions?
We're talking about stuff that isn't for sure yet, though. Like everything you said is possibly.
You have to prepare for the future.
We aren't preparing. We're spending less than what we have coming in.
Can't live in fear. We're living fear. Living fear. We're working on today, and we'll prepare for tomorrow, whatever that needs to be, we'll meet those challenges. That's our job as a board. I can't, you can, you can sit here and give me a hundred and ten different scenarios, all right? Until it happens, it's just talk, all right? So what I'm trying to do is put this corporation in a positive position where we can attract and retain the best teachers possible, which is going to lead to our kids getting the best educational experience they can. That's our job. That's our job and responsibility.
And as far as stipends, I don't, I don't agree with the whole stipends either, because then it doesn't, it's not on your base pay, so then like the following year, then you're still back, and then there's no, there's no percentage for any kind of inflation in that either. So having it on your base pay where you're getting it, you know you're getting that every mo, every year, and then you're increasing every year instead of being the same.
But then increasing every year is what will get us in trouble financially when you have to make reductions.
Well, you don't. You're going to, you just said, we're going to retire a bunch of teachers the next four or five years, so you're going to lose people at the top of the scale making seventy-seven thousand a year, and you're going to bring in people at forty-two, forty-three. So that, that's, that is an ongoing process, you know? This is my twenty-first year as a superintendent.
Attrition.
That's how it works.
Attrition. That's actually an item. I'd love to have heard that four months ago when I asked for it. Appreciate it.
But your offer was also two and a half years' worth of what we gave. You want to give them a five thousand dollar stipend, we're doing two thousand right now, so you're basically, let's give them three years' worth of it right now. But then you're still worried about three years down the road. See what I'm saying?
Well, that's because the, the...
Let's give it to them now while we have it.
Exactly.
That's what you're fighting. You're saying we, we, we're about to lose everything, so we got to hold on to every penny we've got.
No. So what I'm saying is, when you do a contract, the contract next year, they get that money. Every year forward, they get that money forever. So every time that you're banking that money that you don't know you have, we know we have it, we know we can afford five grand this year. We know that we can, I think Dean even mentioned it when I talked to him about the budget.
That's why you adopted a budget, that's why you adopt a budget every year. Every year, you adopt a budget. Right?
We adopt a contract every year, yes.
Well, you, you adopted a budget tonight, you just did it.
Right.
So that's, that's why you do that every year, so that you can adjust your finances to what you're dealing with. I, I don't, I don't know what you're, I don't understand.
And Matt, one thing that the stipend does, if it, if you give them a stipend, then it's in the contract, and that affects your retirement, because your retirement pay is based on your highest five percent years.
Right.
So if you give them a stipend, especially the people at the top, you know, if they're stuck here, which we've taken a stipend before in the past, and that's affected my retirement and everybody else that's retiring, so...
I, I don't want to get in a, in a discussion, but under V-five of stipends, it says the people at the top of the scale are getting a stipend anyway, Mr. Martin. So I mean, it's, it's kind of, we, we've been punting this down the road, and like I said, I don't think that this is, you can call it a tentative contract if you want, but I've looked at the historical precedence of our corporation, and from my standpoint, it was not done and treated fairly.
This is what we did last year. That's all I can tell you.
Mr. Snyder, just to be clarified, just so I, I feel clear about what we're doing. So when you say we're passing tentative language, are we then bound by this, or is it just more or less you authorizing to go forward with that language in a final contract that could potentially have changes be brought to them later?
No, you're voting, this is a vote on the final contract.
Okay.
These changes will be inserted into the contract to, for the, to make the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five contract.
Okay, so this will be binding as far as the, you're basically listed the changes to the current contract that will be then amended and made into a new contract, but there will not be a second action to approve it in fullness, right? This is just added or changed?
Why would we not vote on a final contract?
I don't have it yet, the CTA's working.
No, I mean, when it's, when it's done. Why are we doing a tentative, this is like, this is what we're going to offer them, from what you're explaining to me, and we're voting on that.
Yes.
It's not going to change.
That's...
Why not vote on the final contract? It doesn't make sense, does it make sense to you? Every other branch of local government is not handled this way, and this is the first time that I remember seeing this language presented to us in this form.
I think, I think what they're, I think what he's saying is that the con, the, the language in, in this tentative agreement basically is changing the current contract. It'll be approved, and basically this art, the school board signature will be added, and then if they approve it, then they'll approve it, and there'll be no further action because we've already approved this language. But are you saying that you would prefer for them to have the complete contract approved by them with their signature waiting for us to add at the, you know, as the cap? Is that what you're saying?
The language was, that you said was that they're writing the contract, not you. Is that correct?
Yeah. They're making the changes to the contract. I mean, they, they gave, I got the copy today to go over and edit and proofread, so, yeah.
So basically, this is kind of a shorthand for, here's the substantive agreements to the current, subs, the substantive amendments to the current agreement.
Correct. This is what the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five contract will contain.
It'll be the exact same barring these changes, and you, you're asking for approval to cha, to make these changes to the current contract, and then a final version reflecting these changes will be given to the board as soon as teachers association...
Absolutely. And it's interesting, the association's already ratified the contract.
How would you ever have a public hearing about the changes if what has changed isn't presented to the public? Well, no wonder, Mr. Hall, and Mrs. Wilkins are the only two in the room when we had the public hearing. They're the only ones in the room that know about the contract. Am I wrong? Board, was there anybody else in the room that night that we had the public hearing?
No, but what, what's that, what's that? I don't understand what you're trying to make, Matt.
Transparency to spending, it's important. Then if they have questions, they would have been at the public hearing.
Wasn't it posted?
I think, yes.
We have it posted on the website, we posted in the newspaper.
Melissa, tell me where it was posted on the school website, you just said it was?
It was, typically, it is posted on the website, though it does, it's on the outside of the corporation, on the window. It is with, Kathy Tredder, was it posted with you and the newspaper?
You have to go through the resource tab in the middle, pull down, and then click on contracts, then go and select the bottom of the three list of things. You're, you're voting on a contract that you've never looked at on the school's website? Yes, presented to us, five pages. Move on, vote on it. Please.
Any other comments, any other discussions?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 I'm abstaining on the grounds that I don't think it's legally binding.
Okay, motion carries four oh one with Matt abstaining. Okay, number five, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a copy of the proposed salary and benefits increases for all non-certified employees. The proposal is to increase the hourly rate of all hourly employees by seventy-five cents per hour, effective August first, twenty twenty-four, and increase the non-certified year-long contract personnel and supervisors by two thousand dollars and the school year calendar salary employees by one thousand five hundred dollars. I also recommend to increase the corporation contribution for the family health insurance plan by two thousand dollars and the single health insurance plan by five hundred dollars to match the benefit contributions provided to teachers. I recommend the board approve the non-certified increases as presented.
Okay, may I get a motion?
I'll move to approve the increase.
Motion by Tyler, may I get a second?
Second.
Second by Janet, is there a discussion?
Total number of people and estimated cost.
Dean, do you have that number?
Estimated cost overall, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-three cents. That's broken out of education fund, operations, and the, there's kind of a combination that we take there, prepaid and hired.
Just to ballpark, Dean, what, what number are we looking at for that amount?
So, so overall, one hundred and thirty-five thousand.
And then... No, number of people, if that affects...
I would ballpark that around the hundred.
Thank you.[1792.53]
And then both with this increase and the CTA increases, estimated four hundred, correct? So that's where that came in from the previous conversations. Okay. Any further discussions or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say? Motion carries five oh. Number six.
Thank you. In your board package, you'll find a copy of the proposed salary and benefits increase for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year for all building level administrators that were employed by South Spencer Schools for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. The proposal calls for a two thousand dollar increase to their salary, and an increase of two thousand dollars in the corporation contribution towards a family health insurance plan, and five hundred dollar increase to the corporation's single plan. I recommend the board approve the increases as presented.
May I get a motion?
All motion to approve.
Motion by Janet, may I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by George, is there any discussion?
Estimated cost to the corporation?
My breakdown's a little bit different. Um, I had a breakdown going out of the education fund, so coming out of the education fund, it was about twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say? Motion carries five oh. Number seven.
Thank you. In your board package, you'll find copies of the South Spencer High School, South Spencer Middle School, Loose Elementary, and Rockport Elementary school improvement plans for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Each school is required to provide a school improvement plan to the Department of Education every year. I recommend the board approve the school improvement plans for South Spencer High School, South Spencer Middle School, Loose Elementary, and Rockport Elementary as presented.
May I get a motion?
I'll most.
Motion by George, may I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say? Motion carries five oh. Number eight.
In your package, you'll find a request from FFA advisor, Mr. Andrew Hagan, to attend the National FFA Con- Convention in Indianapolis on October twenty-third and October twenty-four. It's a great opportunity to learn and network with experts in the agricultural field. I recommend the board approve Mr. Hagan's request as presented.
May I get a motion?
I'll most.
Motion by George, may I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Janet, is there any discussion?
Do you know if this has already been set up? You're talking about in two days. Our room's already booked and all that, we're just doing this to rubber stamp that it's approved? Okay. All I need.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say? Motion carries five oh. The next one is consideration of personal recommendations.
Thank you. Before I read the list, is there any name or item on this list you would like to take individually, or is the entire group acceptable?
I'm good with all of them listed.
Good.
Good?
Good.
The following recommendations. Mason Gross, Assistant Instrumental Music Director, South Spencer High School, effective immediately. Rebecca Harmon, Temporary Teacher Assistant, Rockport Elementary, effective September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Erica Curry, Evening Custodian, South Spencer High School, effective immediately, pending background check. Emily Boyd, Varsity Swim Coach, South Spencer High School, effective immediately, pending background check. Courtney Nice, Dance Team Coach, South Spencer High School, that is effective immediately, pending a background check. Jesse Howe, Seventh Grade Head, Boys Basketball Coach, South Spencer High School, or South Spencer Middle School, effective immediately, pending background check. Luke Hill, Sixth Grade Boys Basketball Coach, South Spencer Middle School, that is effective immediately, pending a background check. Dylan Kelly, Girls Little Rebels Coordinator, that is effective immediately. And Sharon McDonald, Transfer from the ten-month custodial position at South Spencer High School to the ten-month custodial position at Loose, that is effective October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, may I get a motion?
I'll most.
Motion by George.
I'll second George's motion.
Second by Matt, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say? Motion carries five oh. Okay, informational items, these were written reports to the board. First one was the maintenance report, pages one fifty-three to one seventy-four. Um, number two was the technology report, pages one seventy-five and one seventy-six, and the transportation report, uh, pages one seventy-seven. And next is statements and concerns of the board. Do we have any statements?
I just have one thing. Um, I know Melissa and I attended the ISBA, um, conference that was back in September, and I think one thing that I constantly heard in all of the sections that I went to is promote, promote, promote. And so to make sure that we have, I know we do a lot of things on the website with what we're doing in schools, but just keep putting it out there, and, you know, I know we have the Facebook pages, Rockport Elementary and Loose Elementary, I see those quite a bit. Um, so just keep putting out there the great things that we do in our schools for the community to know what we're actually doing and why we need their support.
Yeah, I agree with, with Janet. Um, I would like to add that, um, we got a congratulations to all these kiddos that were recognized this evening at both Loose and for Rockport Elementary. Also, congrats to our fall sports teams. A lot of our sectional games are, um, are finished. However, um, our football team starts our first game on Friday at Forest Park at six-thirty. And then also, our South Spencer Marching Rebels go to semi-state on Saturday. Um, they are going to be playing, um, semi-state competition at Franklin Community High School. And our performance time is six forty-five Eastern, um, so their time. And then also, um, lastly, the Loose Elementary Fall Festival is November ninth from eleven AM to three PM. So bring your families out, have fun, play games, win some goldfish. Um, there's a lot of activities going on, so bring your family. Anything else?
November ninth?
November ninth.
What, what was the time? I didn't get that. Eleven to three? Eleven to three.
I, I have one item. Uh, talking with Job Sparks, Job Spark through Junior Achievement, and they brought to my attention, uh, Lilly Award winners. Can you give us an update on who our candidates are for juniors and seniors for the Lilly Award, uh, this year? And, uh, someone to give an actual update on that? I'd actually like to, like to see as we, you know, we're halfway through the school year, and as Janet said about promotion, I'd like to, to see something from, uh, the guidance counselor actually present on what those things are looking like right now. You want to encourage, I mean, it's a full ride scholarship to an in-state school. Uh, for us not to have someone on the, uh, top one or two for that is, uh, not acceptable in my book.
Would Mr. Martin have that information? Okay.
I will copy it.
Okay. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay, our next meeting is, um, going to be Monday, November the eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-four, at six PM here in the multipurpose room. It is six fifty-one. May I get a motion to, a meeting? Motion by George, may I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say? Motion carries five oh.
You're John.
I didn't hear you say that.
You know that our next board meeting is on Veterans Day, right? I'll be here.
Do you need a signature?
Yeah. I do, yep.
Can I swing by the, or is there a lot?
Not a whole lot.
Okay.